Six thirty, call the meeting to order. Certify compliance with the open records law.
Yes.
Roll call please.
Councilmember Hayden is absent, councilmember Hooker.
Here.
Councilmember Menke.
Here.
Councilmember Reese.
Here.
Councilmember Weisbeck.
Here.
Councilmember Weisappel.
Here.
I represent.
Next we have the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unregapped and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
It is, yes it is, flag bearer. Next, would somebody like to make a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Second. We have a motion and second to adopt the agenda, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no, we are adopted. Next move on to public comments, the floor is open for anybody that, for the public that would like to speak on a subject that's on the agenda or any other thing, if you do, please identify yourself for the record. Hearing no public comments, we're going to move on to, we do not have any scheduled appearances this evening, we'll move on to the consent agenda. The following matters may be acted upon by the city council utilizing a single vote. Individual items which any member wishes to address in greater detail or as a separate item on the regular agenda may be removed from the consent agenda upon the request of any council member. And all we have are the minutes from the regular city council meeting from May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
We have a motion and second to approve the consent agenda, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion's agreed to. Next we're going to have a public hearing, the purpose of this public hearing is for the renewal of the following license, licenses issued by the city. We have a combination Class B liquor fermented malt beverage license for the following businesses. Bodie's Saloon LLC, Cell Block LLC, Riverside Corral Incorporated doing businesses, Corral Bar, Riverside Grill, Duran Hotel Group doing businesses, Cobblestone Inn and Suites LLC, Rooster Tail Bar and Grill, Rolling Greens Golf Course, Travis W. Hooker doing business as the Spot Bar LLC, and the Kingfisher LLC. A Class B and C for Perks Cafe. A combination Class A liquor and fermented malt beverage license for the following businesses. Consumers Co-op Oil doing business as Duran Senix, LNP Nyberg LLC doing business as the Duran Fresh Market, Synergy LLC doing businesses, the Duran Travel Stop number three seven seven four, Ryan's Sports Shop Incorporated, Todd Kunkel Enterprises Incorporated doing businesses, the Handy Mart ten forty-seven, and Quick Trip Incorporated. I hereby declare this public hearing open, if anybody would like to speak concerning the renewal of these licenses is your opportunity, if you would like to speak, please identify yourself for the record. Again, I make one more call for any public comments in this public hearing concerning the renewal of these licenses issued by the city. Hearing none, I hereby declare this public hearing closed. Next we're going to move on to the mayor's report, I'm going to keep it, I know there's other department heads will have stuff to talk about, I just want to talk about Fun Fest quickly. Fun Fest, I think went very well this weekend, it seems like a lot of people had a good time, and a lot of people enjoyed themselves, events had quite a few, a very good participation, talked to a number of citizens, and it seems like things went quite well. So I'd like to congratulate the Duran Improvement Group, the Fun Fest Committee, and all the volunteers, and the sponsors, everybody else who helped put it together for a great weekend for the sixtieth Fun Fest this past week. Okay, that's all I've got, there's nothing that we moved on to the consent agenda, next I move on to the administrative support, administrator Rasmussen.
Good evening, I'll make it very brief as well, I'm going to continue on a little bit of my broken record discussion of what's happening in Madison regarding our shared revenue items. Plus side, basically the legislature has come to an agreement, my understanding is that vote is up today, I have not heard any results, but in some of the final, some numbers that we're seeing, it's looking like every municipality is going to be getting at least a twenty percent increase in state shared revenue, and as a reminder, our shared revenue payment is basically kind of a pass-through grant from the state of Wisconsin, that we get to the tune of last year for this year's budget, four hundred and sixty-five thousand six hundred dollars, so it's a big part of our revenue, and it's used primarily in the general fund for police operations, fire, public works, it's just, there's no limitations on what we can use it for. And again, I apologize only a little bit for kind of bringing this up all the time, because this is, in the term I've seen a number, both the governor's office and even the legislature, who are agreeing now for the first time on a lot of different things on this item, is that this is transformative, and frankly, again, I've been in this business thirty-plus years, shared revenue has been going down in the thirty years I've been working, there's been no changes to it, very few changes, some minor adjustments backwards, not upwards, so a twenty percent increase, I mean, again, this is, this is a big deal, so the city of Duran is looking at additional potential ninety-three thousand dollars plus. And again, as the mayor talked about a little bit, at the last meeting we were talking about the public works, and Stan will talk some more about that later, you know, there are some strings attached, but you know, the strings that are attached for us are so minor, I mean, clearly, it's clearly meant to be used for, primarily brought forward for public safety, but the public works is also included in that, so, you know, there's just very few things that we aren't going to be able to potentially work with once we get this money. And maybe not to steal so much Stan's thunder, but when we get to the police department report, and what we talked about is public safety, I think one of the main things that I think we're talking about regarding this money is the potentiality of hiring another officer, from the standpoint that we are continuing to struggle to find any partner to help at all, and it just frankly isn't out there. So, that could be a big chunk of this, once again, that's not to say, clearly at this point, you know, we don't have the money yet, and we're not quite sure, I guess the other piece is how soon we're going to get it, I don't know that it's going to be for the twenty twenty-four budget, I have not seen any details, you know, hopefully it will be, but again, I've not seen any devil in the details on that, but I'd like to think that, again, by the end of this week, or probably by tomorrow, that this is probably could be a done deal. So, frankly, it's great news for the city, and all cities in the state of Wisconsin, cities, counties, villages, townships, municipalities in the states, so, again, I guess, you know, give kudos where kudos is due, the governor's office, on both sides of the legislature, everyone seems to be in real agreement on this, that this is long overdue, and hopefully it's going to, going to help us balance budgets and keep projects going, and keeping citizens, providing citizens the services that we, that they've grown accustomed to, that the city of Duran has provided for a lot of years, so again, I think it's a great thing. That's really all I have, I think we'll chime in later on on some partner reports as well, but, thank you.
Any questions for the city administrator? Hearing none, we move on, discussion possible action regarding the combination Class B liquor and fermented malt beverage license, I won't read them all again from the public hearing, but these are specifically for the combination Class B liquor fermented malt, is, ask the clerk, is everybody up to date?
For Class B, yes.
Okay, okay, so, in this particular case, is there any discussion concerning this? And if anybody would like to make a motion concerning the Class B liquor and fermented malt beverage licenses?
I'll make a motion to approve the Class B liquor and fermented malt beverage license.
Your second?
Yep.
We have a motion second, is there any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Do you actually want it abstained?
I can if you want me to.
Have the record show that councilmember Hooker abstained. Okay, it is approved, next move discussion possible action regarding the Class B and Class C for Perks Cafe. Would somebody like to make a motion concerning that application?
With the perks, yes.
I'd like to motion approve Class B and Class C for Perks Cafe.
Second.
We have motion and second to approve the Class B and Class C for Perks Cafe, is there any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no, it's approved. Next we have discussion possible action regarding the combination Class A liquor and fermented malt beverage licenses.
That one we do have an issue with, Duran Travel Stop.
We're still waiting for some?
Yes.
Okay, so, if somebody would like to make a motion, and by the way, we have, there's two ways of doing this, you can say contingent on, that then all of them are approved, but the Duran Travel Stop is contingent on getting the rest of the proper payment information to the clerk. So that's the way it should be presented, if somebody would like to make that motion.
Motion.
Okay, so we'll make the motion with the contingency based on the one, on the one license, is there any, is the motion is our second?
Second.
Second, we have a motion and second, is there any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Approved. And remember, for our new council members and stuff like, it is a yearly thing, and they always take effect as of July first. Okay, next we move on, discussion possible action regarding the attached operator license list, everybody was presented with the list, there's a number of renewals, of course, and this is also some new ones, now, everybody isn't on this because some people have two years, right?
Correct.
So this is anybody renewing for the one-year license, chief, any questions about any of these?
Everybody's fine on the list, mayor.
Okay, so, would somebody like to make a motion concerning the operator license list?
I'll make a motion to approve the operator's license list as presented.
Is there a second? We have a motion and second to approve the operator license list, any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. They are approved. Next we move on, discussion possible action regarding tobacco licenses for the Duran Senix, Duran Fresh Market, Duran Travel Stop, Hyke Pharmacy, Handy Mart, ten forty-seven, Family Dollar, and Quick Trip. And again, this is a separate license, correct, what's the cost for, they do pay for those?
Tobacco's twenty.
A twenty dollar licensing fee for those.
Is that a yearly?
Correct, yep.
Off the computer.
All yearly.
Off the computer from that one as well.
Anyway, would somebody like to make a motion?
No.
Concerning the tobacco license?
Motion to approve.
Yep, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion second, any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Approved. And we finally move on to discussion possible action regarding the attached list for the coin machine license list, and that was the business names, Advent Health, Bodie Saloon LLC, Cell Block, Corral Bar Riverside Grill, Duran Arkansas School District, Pepin County Government Center, Rooster Tail Bar and Grill, and the Spot Bar in Duran for the licenses, and again, this is also yearly, which costs?
The coin is fifty dollars.
Is a fifty dollar?
And these are vending machines?
Yep.
Yes, and you coin operated machines.
And it's just like, it's fifty dollars regardless of the number of machines, we may have changed.
A few years ago, we used to count machines and blah, 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 and, so we went to just, just one, one fee for the, for the voting. Would somebody like to make a motion concerning the machine, the coin machine license list?
So.
Second.
We have a motion second to approve the coin machine license list, any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. It is approved. Next we move on to public safety, police department, chief Ridgeway.
I just have a quick report, Fun Fest went really well for us, we really only had one mayor issue the entire weekend, everybody, it was a great crowd, good turnout, traffic flow was good, the grade went very smooth for us, so it was a great Fun Fest, it's great to see the community out there supporting that event, it was a good crowd, so, that was nice. Update on staffing that we talked about a little bit in public safety, so, we have been struggling with part-time help, I've gone through three hiring processes, I've received one application, and that was for a student that just graduated in May from Chippewa Valley Technical College, but he doesn't have his academy yet, so we will look at sponsoring him this fall, got to interview him, but it's not somebody who can start right away to help us out at all. So, I've been through it three times, and one application, so, we're just, the part-time thing with law enforcement just is no longer working, and thankfully the state is doing something about it, and hopefully we can utilize those, those funds to hire another full-time officer, we'll be talking about that, Scott and I will be working on that over the next couple of months to come up with an exact proposal and budget, and how much that'll cost, and then council can make the decision if that's the direction we want to go. Any questions on that? Or do you have anything else? Okay, Logan Tulip did graduate from the academy Friday, he finished up his academy at Western Technical College, he, if you recall or not, he had a military obligation, so he missed the last week of his academy at Chippewa Valley Technical College, so I worked with the state and the two technical colleges to get him in down in Sparta at Western Technical, so, they agreed to work that out, let him go down there, so when he returned from his military obligation, he was able to finish, otherwise he would have had to wait till October to jump back in with CBTC, we wouldn't have been able to use him over these next few months, so, I appreciate Western Technical and CBTC working with each other in the state of Wisconsin, allowing that to happen, allowing them to switch schools like that for the last week of training, so, so that was good, he's in training right now with John, and he'll be doing a little bit with Brandon as well, so, we'll get him trained, hopefully he'll be ready to go on his own in July. And I just got to thank Brandon, we talked about, I thought about this therapy dog program, which is later on the agenda, but talked to him about it, said, hey, I got this in my mind, I've been working with Blueberry Cottage Labradoodles, and he said he'd like to be involved in it, so he, he did a lot of legwork for me as well, him and I have been working on this program, he's done a great job, kind of taking this on a little bit as well, so I thank him for putting together this proposal that you'll hear later tonight regarding your therapy dog program. That's all I have, if you guys have any questions?
Next we have the SRO report.
Yeah, so Brandon wasn't able to make it tonight, but he did, he did do a written report for you guys, talking about the types of calls that he had at the school, some of the major incidents that we had, you know, a couple of highlights of some things that he did throughout the school year, just did a great job was the mock, the high school mock prom crash, he was a big, big part of that, part of the organizing team for that event, he did an outstanding job on that. The bike rodeo for second and third grade students, we had a great time up there that day, the Pepin County Sheriff's Department came out and helped us with that, and then Brandon and I, and our intern helped teach safe bicycling skills to second and third grade students, and Kenny Woodlawn. So he also did a little bit of mentoring this year, which was, was working out great as well, part of the mentoring was trying to build a better, positive relationship between law enforcement and the student he was working with, Brandon would eat lunch with him, but then he also would call in other resources, he called in, I went up one day and ate lunch with a kid, and with Brandon and him, and just tried to, tried to build a positive relationship with law enforcement with this student that was struggling with some issues with law enforcement, so, he did a great job mentoring this year as well, so those are some highlights from his report, I don't know if anybody has any questions after reviewing it.
I thought it was in his report, I would appreciate it.
Any questions on the SRO report? Next we have discussion possible action regarding the therapy dog program, chief?
Okay, so, like I said, this is a program that we're thinking about, seeing other agencies going this route, seeing the effects, the positive effects that it has on the community and the relationships that you see communities, or agencies building with their communities, and I thought it would be beneficial for us, it's something we don't have in our area that we can utilize right now, so, I started out by calling Heather from Blueberry Cottage Labradoodles, had a discussion with her, via email back and forth, and we kind of talked about a program, things like that, and she said that she would definitely donate us a labradoodle if we got the program approved, so, I said, well, let us keep doing some research on it, the cost, things like that, and let us propose it to council, and we'll see what we can do. So, that's when Brandon got involved, and I told him what it was working on, and showed interest in wanting to work with it as well, so then Brandon got involved, he reached out to Altoona Police Department, so we got some resources from Altoona. The therapy dog would be a great tool for us to have in the school, and also just around our community, responding to stressful calls, calls regarding children, and just boosting morale, and working with kids that are stressed out, having issues, we'd be able to have like traumatic incidents, we'd be able to bring the dog in to meet with the children or the family, critical incidents involving fire department EMS, we'd be able to be waiting at the fire hall when those units arrived back at the station, and they would be able to hang out with the dog, kind of be greeted by the dog, help kind of relieve some of that stress when they get back from a stressful call. You know, all, all types of different things that we'd be able to do with this dog, you know, one thought that Brandon and I had talked about would be if the dispatchers, Pepin County dispatchers had a terrible call that they had to respond to with the sheriff's permission, we'd be able to go in there, have the dog hang out with the dispatcher for an hour or so, and just kind of relieve some of the stress that they had regarding that call. So, we talked about, you know, the cost of the program, we, we would look at fundraising for the entire cost of the program, so some of the costs that we would have to fundraise for would be the officer's cost, we have to pay the officer a half an hour a day for every day that they take care of the dog, the way Altoona worked it is they pay their officer eight dollars and eighty-eight cents a day for a half an hour, and then what I did is I added twenty percent onto that to come up with that thirty-nine hundred dollars that you see on that budget there, twenty percent would be your benefits and things like that, so, so that's what the, what the officer, the handler, would be getting paid for taking care of the dog. This dog would be able to be handled by multiple handlers, this isn't, this isn't like a drug sniffing, dual-purpose type of a police canine, so if we had a call, another officer would be able to, to go and get the dog, and go to the call with, with the dog, they would, they would be able to have multiple handlers, handlers, so, but we would only pay the one officer to take care of the animal at that time. So we have supplies, training wise, we would be looking at yearly certification training, which is thirty dollars to get it certified, the initial training, we would start out with multiple different trainings, there's a puppy school, there's a behavioral, an obedience school, once they've got all of those schools done, and when it's one year old, it would be able to get certified as a therapy dog. So we have a little bit of time where we would, wouldn't have the animal in service from the time that we got the animal, and we'd have to wait until it turned one year old before it could go into service and be certified as a therapy dog. We've got a little bit built in for supplies, collars, dog beds, things like that, we would look at getting donations for vet care, and the food for the animal, we would look at doing, giving donations, area businesses, area dog food producers, things like that, we would look at using those companies for potential donations. The type of dog that it would be would be a labradoodle, so it would need to be groomed, we would, we'd have to have it groomed twice a year, that, those costs around there, eighty dollars, forty dollars per time, but we'd also look at potentially working with a groomer to get those fees donated as well. Some of the fundraising things that we have in mind is, one major fundraiser to kick the program off is we're going to be looking for what we're going to call a gold sponsorship. The gold sponsorship, we would ask that to be a five thousand dollar donation, and we would ask, we would give them naming rights of the animal, so somebody would like to, with us being able to veto any names they come up with as well, we put that in the fine print at the bottom, we reserve the right to veto any name, but we would look at, looking, working with either a local business or a local family that maybe just wants to name the dog after a former dog that they had, or a loved one that they had, but if we're looking for a five thousand dollar donation, we'd be, they'd be able to have naming rights of the animal. And then from there, we would just continue to look for donations to build up our budget for our therapy dog program, and if those donations for some reason weren't coming in, then we would look at doing raffles, fundraisers such as pancake breakfast, maybe a drive-through chicken queue, stuff like that to, to work with, trying to build up our budget for the therapy dog program. If you see the four-year plan, I did increase wages twenty percent, or two percent, twenty percent, increased wages two percent every year in that four-year plan of the budget. I did talk to Angie at the Duran Ambulance Service, and she was a supporter of the program, she stated that she thought it could be a good resource for the Duran Ambulance Service, and I also spoke to Jamie, who thought it was a good program as well. Brandon spoke to Ms. Selko, she agreed also that it could be a good program for the school district, so we're going to present to Greg at some point if we get city council approval, Greg is aware of the program, and we told him that we wanted to get your guys' approval first, and then we would go to the school, in case Brandon was the handler, we'd be able to get that permission from the school to have Brandon be a handler in the school. I've been talking for a long time.
Time frame.
Okay, timeframe would be, she's looking at this winter, having, having pups litter available for us, if we don't have our funding in place, then it would probably be spring sometime, and then when the animal, I don't know, do they get, is it twelve weeks that an animal can, a pup can leave, about twelve weeks or so, then the officer would be able to get the dog, and it would be able to start its training with the officer, and they would just, once a week, go up to Eau Claire, one hour session, and they would basically do a six-week program, and then there's an eight-week program, and then ongoing training from there, and then after it's one year old, then it could get certified, they won't certify them as therapy dogs until they're at least one year old, so, so we would have a little bit of a, you know, eighteen months or so before the dog would be in service, fundraising went, moved right from the get-go. So, we, we can also do some fundraising at our national night out events, we had talked about like, before COVID hit, we had a basketball game planned where police and sheriff's deputies and DMs were going to take on the fire department EMS, we might look at bringing that back as a potential fundraiser maybe this winter during basketball season at some point, so we, we have other events that we can do to, to help us fundraise as well, so.
You looked into insurance?
Yes, I got a question, I spoke to our insurance agent, and because it's a therapy dog, it's covered under our current policy, he said their handle's different than like a dual-purpose canine, so there won't be any extra fees for insurance, and it's covered under our current policy.
I think the biggest reiteration is, the plan is that this won't cost anything to the city, that basically donations will cover everything, to be with the, with the animal, and the, the benefits for the officer, and everything else, so I guess, that's the goal.
Yep.
And again, Stan has outlined, we think this is pretty, pretty feasible to do.
And on the committee, we did, Altoona has a little video put together about their dog, and what it's been used for, and obviously a number of things at the school, but then also, they had officers there, our sheriff's department, deputies who works with a number of sensitive cases, and has used, you know, so there's a number of things that, that it could be useful.
And Stan, you'll forward that link to them.
Yeah, I can, yeah. And one thing that's so great about this program, and great with working with Heather, is the, the multiple handlers, you know, there's some, some virtual classes you can take to kind of learn how they were, they were taught with things, and, and you can become a handler of this dog, so at any point, you know, another officer could come and grab the dog for a case they're working, and work with the animal on that case, so, so it's not just one officer that has to go to everything, so if the night shift crew, John or Chris have something going on, they would be able to go and get the dog, and respond to those situations, you know, if fire EMS were on a, on a terrible call, John or Chris could go and get it, and meet him at the fire hall. If fire EMS were on a terrible call, John or Chris could go and get it and meet them at the fire hall. There's firefighters and EMS personnel and I. It would be a great, great thing to have a dog in the fire hall to kind of change the mood a little bit when they get back.
Any questions on this? Safety Chair, you want to mention the recommendation?
The recommendation from the safety committee was to go ahead with the program. I'd say probably contingent as long as the school approves the dog being, there could Brandon.
Well, sorry. If the school were to say no, then I would be a backup handler for it. I would take it, I would prefer it to be in the school, but we are going to at some point go there. But either way, if the school said, no, our insurance won't let us, or whatever the reason is, and they say, no, we're not interested, then I would still want to do the program, I would just be the handler, so.
So basically, as far as the committee was, if it's minimal at all cost for the city, and everything's got an insurance, go ahead with the program.
And based on that too, I mean, obviously, if it's in schools, that absolutely, somebody needed to ask, how does it work with them? You could probably get that.
They have a very good policy, through Lexible Policy. So all I'd have to do is just, Lexible Policy, we use them as well, is just adopt that policy as well and make it fit our department. So it'll have a policy of, we'll have a policy on when it can be used, how it can be used, and things like that.
The other thing to talk to the policy agent is, it's okay. Clearly, it's, you know, obviously, we're not moving forward with this program immediately. We're talking several, almost over here. So basically, we're authorizing, moving forward with Stan with starting to think about the fundraising efforts and some of the other logistics and how this works. If there's any questions that you come up, you think about later, talk to, in your case, other agencies or things of that nature. Just let us know, and again, we'll address this kind of. So essentially, tonight, we're moving forward with allowing Stan to pursue the program further. We're not going out and getting the dog to our or anything like that, so again, allows us a little bit of time to work these things out.
And as we said, about the schools, and then at that point, then you can start the conversation also with the camel that you're involved with. And say, okay, we got this done, let's go, you know, and let's, in contingent on moving forward with the fundraising as well. Any more questions? Would somebody like to make a motion concerning this issue?
I'll make a motion that we, we want to hear, go ahead with the dog.
Well, the way I said it in the thing, go ahead with the, based on the budgeting and fundraising expectations as presented.
I'll say so.
Okay. Based on the, in the, yeah.
I can say it now.
Yeah, okay, we got a motion second. Again, then we would go ahead with the dog therapy program, again, based on the budget of the fundraising as has been brought forward by the chief. Any more discussion concerning this? I'll take a roll call on this, please.
Councilmember Weissel.
Yes.
Councilmember Menke.
Yes.
Councilman Coker.
Yes.
Councilmember Weisenbeck.
Yes.
Councilmember Riesler.
Yes.
All five in favor.
Next move on, the fire department report, Chief King.
Hi. I think everybody got the report there. So we had nine calls for last month. Five in the city and four in the rural. Not much to report on. Our fundraiser was a huge hit, did very well this year. Everything came out pretty good, we're still counting numbers. The hiring process, we got four applicants. We're gonna interview three of the four on next Monday, this coming Monday. So more likely be putting on a few people.
How many are in position, do you have a possibly bill?
Right now, it's three, but I heard we might be losing another, so. At that point, we'd just be one short again. Not too big of an issue. And the last thing I want to spend a little bit of time on is what you called in there. So the ISO audit, we got audited, I think I told you that last month or the month before. I only made four copies because they're thick packets, but if you, anybody who wants one, that don't get one, let me know, I can get you one.
Or you can put it on the website too.
Yeah, whatever, whichever, but.
They said we would pass it around.
So the ISO is an insurance audit, that all the fire departments get audited. I did meet my goal, we dropped from a five down to a four, which I got told by certain individuals that it wouldn't happen. So I met my goal. As far as dropping even more below a four, will probably never happen in the city during. Pretty much all, if you guys want to go through any of it, start on page sixteen is the grading. The first three-quarters of it is all just explanations of it all. I know the mayor called me with a few questions.
Yeah, when I had received the packet, I just said, in the way I express it, maybe, sorry. In layman's terms, you know, what this all means. Because it's an example of, like, rural areas too far away from fire departments are the high end, which is a ten.
A five, any, more than five miles away from the fire station.
And then you work your way down, and you explain how you work your way down.
Yeah, so if you're more than five miles from the fire station, it's an automatic ten rating on your insurance. Personal and commercial insurance as your home. And then if you're within the five miles, then you get this grading. But the city is all, gets this grading because there's, our city's not larger than five miles. But like, starting on page seventeen, if anybody wants to go through with the low score of the training. So you gotta remember, we get graded as the same as like a city of Minneapolis, which is full-time. So like on the training, I know I only got one point seven-four points out of all the points available. Well, that's really good for what we offer as an apartment. We're not there every day writing down the training numbers, we're only there once a month. That's for the training stuff. Water, the city water system, we did get a really good score on that. That is with all of our hydrants, mats, flow testing, flushing programs, all that. Created really high for a city of our size, so that's a good thing. All the community risk is like our fire prevention stuff. You can go through it, I'm not gonna bore you with it. Long story short, we scored really well. And I was really nervous because we had a new guy this year grading us. And he took some points away from us, saying that the guy that graded us previously wasn't doing it properly. So I got scared until the report come out, we did actually drop. So he will just grade it a little bit different. What the communication program that the county did, was it two, three years ago, that upgrade that really helped us this year? Got the points up. We got eight, eight point one out of ten for communications. And that was low before because of our old radio tower frequency stuff that the county upgraded. So that really helped us out there. The water supply, the city water system scored almost a thirty-five out of four, which is really good. So if anybody else wants one, I got an extra copy here, if you have mine. But if anybody's got questions on it, it's a lot of information in the booklet. It's kind of like one of Matt's sewer plant reports, you get every little detail of everything out there, but.
And also, the way we explained it was that as far as this, obviously, insurance companies use this.
Yeah.
Whether it's going to have, but if we're the best we can be, at least for a city our size, it can't hurt anybody here. So it should be a situation, probably, commercial businesses might be helped a little bit better. I don't know if you have any more insight with that.
Commercial side.
Not to put you in the spot.
The commercial, I know commercials see a better break in their insurance than residential. But then I've also heard that some of the insurance providers are going away from this. Is that?
Most clearly, you're still use.
Still use it.
Still use ISO. City of Eau Claire, for example, is like two, is like full staff. Us dropping from a five to a four on personal insurance, I don't think so much would drop it, but can't hurt.
But it'll be the commercial side, we'd see any large value assured insurance stuff, we'd see. To get a four in our city was, I mean, we were doing everything we could to get down to that. Even with the ladder truck coming next year, it won't, we won't drop to a three. It's gonna be, to drop to a three or a two, like Menominal Claire, we'd have to spend millions. And I mean, none.
Is that a big deal?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, like, training tower, training facility. So like, see, like Eau Claire uses a college's training facility. You'd need multi-million dollar training facilities. The thing that I don't agree with, it takes three volunteers to equal one full-time person. So when they score this, we're volunteer service. So we got thirty-six people. We gotta divide that by three, comes down to twelve. So we only get credit for twelve, comparing us to a full-time department, we only get twelve, credit for twelve guys compared to a full-time. Because it takes three volunteers to make one full-time, which I don't agree with. That's their, how they score it, so.
But to be fair, with that rating, insurance looks at it as longer to get there, obviously.
Not everyone's gonna show up for every call, you know, as a full-time engineer.
And they, when they do this, they look at all of our call runs, along from the page, do we get the truck moving? So there's a lot of stuff that goes into this rating. So it's, but we do have six, eight guys that live within five blocks of the station too. So that helps get the truck out there quicker, so that helps everything. I was, I was happy to get this. It's a big thing for us.
Just to say, on behalf of the city, obviously, the efforts, the leadership and the members of the fire department. And then also including, obviously, as you said, Matt, the water, making sure that, there's a number of things that all put this together. And it obviously proves to be a pretty positive thing.
The county, the county thing was huge too.
The county communication, again, you put all those things together, puts us in a pretty good shape.
When I first started as chief, we were a six. My first audit, I got to a five, now I got to a four, it was my goal. So I've hit all benchmarks.
You could, the way you're gonna go lower than this.
Well, that's better than all the sweets now.
That's okay, so.
If you have an extra copy, Jamie.
Yep. Yep, I have this one. And food for thought, the rural was at a five, and the rural state at a five. So nothing changed on the other half of this.
Any questions on the monthly report or anything else for Chief King? If none, we'll move on to the ambulance. Co-director Doughty and Assistant Director Bowser, floor's yours.
We had forty calls for the month of May. Seven missed calls, three of them were emergent. Two of them were covered by a first responder from our service with no patient transport. One of them was at the same time as another call that we had, that was covered by Mondovi. And then we had four missed transport calls from hospital to hospital. We also have an EMT class coming up that's going to be in Duran. It'll be August twenty-ninth through October nineteenth. It's Tuesdays and Thursdays, five to nine PM. There's open seats for twenty-four students who need at least fifteen to hold the class in Duran.
And make sure we get the information so we can get it out on the website and get it on Facebook page, all that things.
Yeah, we'll be posting it.
Make sure, yeah, and so we get all that information out on it.
We did have one person inactive that turned in their resignation today. But we also had another person from another town that contacted us within the last month that would like to come back and take some call time, so. Hopefully, with the interest in the class and reaching out to people that have been here in the past, trying to get someone to come back. Right now, it's really a struggle with four or five people that take ninety percent of the time. But we're moving forward.
Anything else? Any questions for the ambulance service? I'd like to welcome your first special meeting that you two have sat in, so again, we look forward to seeing you each and every month, or between you and Angie, I suppose, to rotate through as far as, as far as the administration. Okay, thank you. Next, we'll work on the public works and utilities. Engineers report, Russ.
Yes, good evening. I have the engineers report, I have a quick few project items to update you on. First one on my list is Madison Street reconstruction project, street utilities. If you remember, that's a project that the city was awarded a Wisconsin DOT local road improvement, municipal street supplementary grant for. So our field topographic data collection survey work is complete. So now we're moving into the preliminary design phase. We have a meeting scheduled with Matt. Next Tuesday morning, we're gonna walk the entire project and talk about design issues and so forth for the project. Twelfth Avenue East, that's the street reconstruction project adjacent to the new Dollar Tree, Dollar General project. We have a pre-construction meeting scheduled tomorrow with next level excavating to talk about their schedule and coincide with the Dollar General project, major construction being completed. So anticipate next level excavating starting sometime in July, so. The other update, last year in May, we applied for the Main Street project. It's proposed several years out, reconstruction project, street utilities. We applied in May of last year for the new bipartisan infrastructure law funding through the DOT. Through that solicitation, I think there was one project in Northwest Wisconsin awarded through the Surface Transportation Local Program. One project in Northwest Wisconsin, I think twenty-two statewide. The DOT is projected to have one point three billion in that program. So just this week, they came out with the new solicitation. That's supposed to have a lot more funding, but funding last year, they only funded twenty-two million in projects. And I think there were six hundred and fifty applications that were submitted. So the new solicitation just came out this week. Almost exact similar application that we did last year. So we'll be submitting a re-application for the Main Street project. Applications aren't due till October twenty-seventh, so we have plenty of time to pull it together. But it looks to be very similar, so we'll see what happens. We don't know the amount of funding in the STP local, which would be, which would cover your project, the Main Street project. But we're told that it's significantly higher, so. Well, we believe last year what happened, the state of Wisconsin was ahead of a lot of other states. And they really made a push for people to get applications in. What we believe is the allocation wasn't available from the federal government yet. So that's why they didn't fund a whole lot of projects last year. So there'll be more coming up this round. Also with the Main Street project, the same funding that you received for the Madison Street project a year or so ago. That new cycle will be coming up in the fall, so we'll be pursuing some funding through that program. And that's the Wisconsin DOT local road improvement project program again. And that has fifty percent up to eighty percent, up to ninety percent funding. Stuff that will be replying, reapplication for into the bill program, that's an eighty-twenty, eighty percent grant funding, twenty percent local. And that's just for the street improvement part, but it doesn't cover the water and sanitary suit, so.
And then first look at that, to reapply for that one, is there anything that stands out that's different? Or something that we could do differently, maybe help us, it's pretty much all the same.
The only thing, yes, good point, Mayor. If we can get any letters of support from any agencies or any community agencies or other involvement in the community, other governing agencies, letters of support would help. That'd be one, one item, so.
We can solicit letters.
We can give you some ideas.
Let's get a list together. If you have any good ideas of which direction, I mean, I'm sure we could do that. Anything else, Russ? Any questions for the city engineer?
Surveying work on Madison, all that, we've solved for Cedar employees and.
Yep, it's all done.
And this might lead, what you talked about, of course, the project up by the new Dollar Store. And you might have been mentioning this about timing of this. I see they must have gotten pretty close to doing the gravel and stuff in the parking lot.
Yeah, just talked and looked.
Yeah, just talked to them today, we've got, uh.
You'll have that part of your report, where you take, okay, we'll get, we'll let you. And by the way, speaking of that report, Superintendent Ellis.
Yeah, just a couple of things, uh, um, the ash trees, uh, in the boulevards are, have been cut down between last week and this week. Uh, so the boulevard ones are down, we're just gonna wait a little while before we get to the park. We've got some other work, you know, that needs to do, and we're in a hurry to get those ones out. But the, the trees that the, uh, citizens signed on to pay for have been cut down. And we'll be working on paying those bills and getting their fifty percent, uh, bills back out to them. Uh, the pool furnace is up and running, uh, got running on Friday. Uh, happy to report that the pool is a steady eighty-six to eighty-eight degrees. Uh, people seem to be a little bit more cheerful. Uh, sad note, uh, we lost one lifeguard. Uh, the lifeguard moved away, uh, it's an hour commute one way. And it just doesn't make sense to drive two hours to make twelve dollars an hour. So, um, we lost one of our lifeguards. So we'll be working through some scheduling, um, some of the other guards are working on picking up some shifts. Uh, as of right now, I don't believe we're going to lose any, at least for June anyway, lose any of the days, um, that we will be open. So we'll work through July, uh, might end up with a little D on for a couple of them, we're gonna get through this month. But we will, uh, we'll do our best.
No negative impact on lessons?
Yeah, no negative impact on lessons, uh, which are starting Monday. Lessons starting Monday on this week and next week. Uh, we are checking guard availability for July, for the twenty-seventh, uh, to the twenty-eighth, or the third, whichever that, third.
Seventeenth.
To Friday, seventeenth to the following Friday, twenty-eighth, twenty-something, twenty-eighth. Uh, running a second round of lessons, uh, but we're double checking guard schedules, making sure the guards don't have, uh, our pre-commitments for those two weeks so that they could be around to actually do the lessons. So, uh, supposed to find that out tomorrow or Friday morning, and then next week we'll work on potentially giving some sign-ups up for a second round of lessons.
How long is a round of lessons?
That's two weeks, so it's a one-hour session, uh, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. And then Friday is that rain date, in case one day got, got rained out.
Okay.
And as I said, come driving along there the other, uh, early this week, you know, see the big crowd, oh, lessons must have started, all the, all the parents out, grandparents, everybody else out watching.
So everything else at the pool, uh, seems to be running smooth for the time being. So, uh, hopefully, we can keep that up for the next, uh, two months. Uh, Dollar General's coming along, they got their last piece of the puzzle for their, uh, storm sewer, an underground filtration system that's required by D N R code. Uh, they should be installing that, and they should be tying into the street in the next couple of weeks, uh, with black topping roughly the middle of, um, July. They're looking at, uh, black topping a lot. And then fixtures coming in, and the store potentially being open to the public that second week in August is their rough tentative schedule right now, so.
And this was saying that, once they get their parking lot done, then that's what we.
We're gonna talk.
Cause we don't wanna do our road while they're still, like, doing stuff in their lot.
Yeah, we don't wanna do anything on our road while they got a lot of heavy equipment in there yet. Uh, cause we do need, when we do the curb and gutter and the aprons, we need some time for curing before, uh, traffic goes over. So we're really trying to, we're trying to time this out to where maybe they can get their, their lot black topped right up to within two, three feet of where we need to be. And then we'll come in and get our road construction done, uh, get our curb port and apron port up to their black top. So that, uh, there's a, maybe a week period while they're in transition before they open up where nobody's gonna be in and out of there. Is what we're hoping for, but, um, as we all know, construction doesn't always work that way. Uh, one last thing, I do wanna have a public works committee meeting in July. Uh, looking to see the availability of that committee on July twelfth. We do have city council that night, so it's probably a long meeting, so seeing if we could meet at four-thirty if that worked for the committee, or the following Wednesday, the nineteenth, whatever time.
Councilmember Race was the chair, we try to work that out, yeah, we'll see.
So the twelfth or the nineteenth?
The nineteenth would be, I think, better for me, if possible, otherwise, um, I just know that Wednesday, I have something at five, so.
So, and we'll get that worked out, we'll get that worked out, but if I have, okay.
So other than that, that's all I got, unless you have any questions, others in what's on the agenda.
How was your, again, with Fun Fest?
Uh, everything went great for us, uh, all of our facilities were good. We sprayed, uh, we fogged mosquitoes Thursday night, uh, used about ten gallons, ten, eleven gallons of fog. Uh, and then we sprayed, uh, uh, the grass with the liquid spray twice that week. Um, seemed that, whether it worked or not, I can't tell you, the temperatures.
Seems to work really good, I thought.
Oh, the temperatures worked in our favor too, it was cold on Sunday, so they won't come out when it's, you know, usually below sixty, fifty-five. You don't see a lot of activity anywhere.
Want to, want to smoke, chuck them all up?
On that same line, next week is music in the park, we will be potentially fogging again on Monday or Tuesday, and spraying, uh, Wednesday morning, grass over there is how we, our program works as of now, so. Other than that, all of our facilities worked, were great, uh, no issues, uh, from a public work standpoint.
Any questions, uh, for public works and utilities? If none, we'll move on to discussion of possible action regarding resolution twenty-three oh four, Consumer Maintenance Annual Report. It was included in your packet.
Yeah, for those of you that have been on for a while, uh, this is old news, for those of you new, this is new news. Uh, this is the Compliance Maintenance Annual Report for the wastewater treatment facility and collection system. Uh, this is what the D N I requires us to, uh, put together for the year twenty-twenty-two. It's basically takes every aspect of the wastewater treatment plant, from what we treat down as a treatment plant, to staffing, to finance, to collection system maintenance. The entire, basically, sewer department, uh, pretty much goes under a, a one-year review. Uh, and then we have to approve, uh, the grading tonight through resolution, and then I gotta submit the resolution, um, and any action or plan of action to correct any issues, which, good news, if you've read through it, the last page is the grading, you can't get any better than, than what we have, so, um. You know, just kind of a quick synopsis for the new members, uh, the first page is the influent loading and flow, that's what comes into the treatment plant. We treat, we test that, so we know kind of what we're dealing with.
I had a quick question.
You bet.
I, I noticed that April, May, and June are your heavy months.
Yes, we have a lot of infiltration in the city of here and there.
Okay.
We have shallow groundwater and deep sewer pipes, deep old sewer pipes that are full of cracks and, and leaky joints and roots. And so as the groundwater comes up, which tends to happen a lot in, uh, April, May, and June, we get a lot more groundwater that leaks into our system.
Okay.
You will see, if you wanna compare this, you compare twenty-twenty-two to what you're gonna see in twenty-twenty-three, you're gonna know exactly what to talk about. Those numbers are gonna be three times higher. So, uh, this is the influent loading, uh, our treatment plant's only designed for so much. Our treatment plant is designed to handle eight-hundred-and-sixty thousand gallons a day. Um, then you have grading based on that, uh, and then there's a design flow, so many pounds per day of B O D that we can handle. Again, we are well below any numbers, and we get an excellent score on that. Um, the next one is the, uh, F-inlet quality. Uh, for F-inlet quality, we have, uh, you have, this is the B O D section. Uh, the next section is a suspended solid section, and then you have the phosphorus section. Those are the three things that we have to treat for to go out into the river. Uh, and as you can see, the monthly limit for B O D is thirty milligrams per liter, and we're well under ten. Uh, we don't hit no digits once, uh, average one, one month for B O D. Uh, suspended solids is roughly the same thing, you have a limit of thirty milligrams per liter, and you kind of hang in at ten to fifteen average, uh, which is well below our limit. Um, the phosphorus, we have a limit of one point zero milligrams per liter. And we can thank the, uh, size of the Chippewa River for that limit. And we can thank all of our upstream treatment plants for all the lower quality, uh, removal that they have to do so that we can keep our one point zero limit, so. And our new permit will be staying at the one point zero limit as well for the next five years, so good news for the city of Durant. Uh, you can see that average, um, we use a chemical to remove phosphorus. So we try to keep that average as close to one as possible solely because that chemical costs a lot of money. So it does not benefit us to take it down any lower than a point eight, point nine. You know, otherwise, we're spending a lot more money than we need to spend. Uh, some months, yeah, we're down to a point six or point seven, but, um, we try to, you know, we don't wanna flirt with being over the limit, you know? So like, point eight's our goal, some months we're right at it, maybe point nine, some, you know, point seven. Uh, bio solids, that's what we haul out. Uh, the sludge that we remove, we haul out to a farmer over in Arkansas. We pay to, we pay that farmer to take our sludge, uh, we land apply it, and we have to incorporate it. Uh, we have to do a lot of testing for arsenic, copper, lead, mercury, phosphorus, a whole gamut of testing that we have to do on that. Uh, we are in nowhere, nowhere near any of those limits as well. Um, on our bio solid storage, we can store greater than a hundred and eighty days.
Can I make a comment on, about using, the, the one thing about it is when you, we, we get rid of it the way that we do, first of all, the farm line has to be approved. You can't just pick a farm or so and so, and if we did not have this farm available, or find, find another one, I mean, we pay them so much to put it there, the cost would jump quite, uh.
Quite, like, for example, right now, we pay the farmer like six thousand dollars a year to use his field and haul it on there to take this to a bio solids facility, which probably costs us fifty thousand dollars a year.
So it's, it obviously.
It's the cheapest, cheapest route for us to go on that route. I probably shouldn't say that, a lot of the farm owners be asking for money.
Um, and the other thing is too, is like, one thing we used to do, I know when I started as mayor, of course, now we actually just hire a company to come in and, uh, and spread it for us. Cause for a while, we used to rent a tractor and spread it ourselves.
We used to rent a tractor and own our own, uh, sludge tanker. It, uh, it used to take us the better part of the week, a little over a week to do it ourselves. Now, we hire it done, uh, and it's about four or five orders and they're, and they're out of there.
And they're done.
And they're done. So by the time we rented the tractor, paid for fuel, insured the sludge tanker, and paid staff for five days, and the staff's assigned, costing them anyway, but, uh, but it basically come out and washed the time you rented the tractor, insured the tanker, had emissions on the tanker, it basically come out to wash. Uh, next, there's, uh, staffing and the preventive maintenance. Um, our plant is adequately staffed. D N I requires, uh, two certified, uh, operators to run the wastewater drainage plant. We currently have four, uh, and our, our fifth employee is working on garnishing his, uh, certifications as we speak. Uh, he needs a total of nine tests, he's got five right now, he's a point six, so, uh, he's doing an excellent job, um, with that. It also, uh, goes in here and talks about preventative maintenance as far as, um, do we have plans in place? Uh, do you allow us the proper amount of time to implement those plans? And do all the greasing and new one maintenance that, that we do, which is obviously yes, you guys are very supportive of the time that we spend at the wastewater treatment plant. Then the next one is the operator certification, again, like I just said, I'm the certified operator in charge, certified, uh, to the plant, plus we have, uh, our other certified, uh, operators. Next is financial management. We, uh, we are, we've, this section basically asks if you do reviewing of your, uh, finances on an annual basis. Asks if you also have sewer use ordinances in place, and you enforce them, and how often you review them. Uh, we review them on an annual basis when we basically do budgeting. You know, we review all of our sewer use ordinance, well, I review our sewer use ordinances, um, but then on the budget, we review all of our, uh, comings. You will kind of see the, the equipment replacement fund activity, um, by law, you're supposed to, by D N R code, you're supposed to have an equipment replacement fund. Um, we don't stick a lot of money in that equipment replacement fund solely because we would have the rates with the astronomical, cause you can see here that we would need ten million dollars in that fund if we were gonna basically build a new treatment plant.
Yeah, I was gonna ask about that, that's a lot.
Yeah, that, that, the, the new treatment plant would actually cost probably twenty million dollars at, now, at today's price. But, um, we, we don't have that money, we don't put that money in there. We do have a, a savings account, and, and unrestricted fund balance account. But we do know that we borrow the money whenever we wanna do major projects, we do bonding, we do borrowing, you know, we increase our rates to pay all that stuff back, so that essentially, um, offsets that, that fact.
So if you had to replace everything right now, at today's prices, you think it's more than twenty?
Just the, just inside that fence home area, it would be fifteen to twenty million dollars if we had to replace that all brand new. That's not touching all the underground piping, the fifteen miles of underground piping.
Sure. And for everybody also, Mark, which is a new member, uh, the one thing about it is the sewer plant, like water plant's on, has its own budget, and it's also what we call a revenue fund. So in other words, we make revenue from the citizens, we put it in there, we have to spend that money on that.
There's no tax levy dollars.
There's no tax levy dollars put into running any of those, it's automatic, and then, uh, obviously, we can control the sewer rates. The state of Wisconsin, uh, has to approve all water rate changes and so on. But again, we need to make sure, uh, when I originally came here, about ten years ago, that used, we used to have a financial F on this report.
Yeah, we used to get it.
And we got it up to an A, it was an F for, and we've done a lot of things, and that was, they made, uh, obviously, that, his staff, um, the city administrator, uh, uh, before him and also Terry, he's done a great job keeping us so that we're able to get that A on this report. But it was an F at one time.
We used to get Fs on it solely because, uh, we never reviewed and increased, you know, our, our income on an annual basis. And now we have built-in resolutions and ordinances to increase that on like a two or a three percent, uh, annual for sure. We can go higher if we need to, but that's the minimum that we, that we've implemented over the years to get this from an F to an A.
Matt, do you remember what, uh, the Mondovi's going through a process of, of replacing their?
Yeah, I remember theirs, it was around that fifteen million dollar mark. That's what sticks in.
There's a, is it up in operation?
Not completely, uh, and, you know, that fact, that's about a two-year build. From the time you started building to the time you build and get it up in operation and run, it's about a two-year process if you were gonna build a new treatment plant. Uh, see, we're, oh, and also in the financials, uh, you know, they look at, uh, energy consumption. So you'll see, well, we keep track of the power that we use, we keep track of the natural gas that we use. Um, lots of, uh, of, uh, reporting at the wastewater treatment plant, they look for future projects. Like you can see, the Main Street, the Madison Street projects are on there, um, as what we're gonna be doing in the future. And then biogases, we do, uh, we do generate methane gas down at the wastewater treatment plant through our digester. We use that to heat the building, uh, we use to heat the digester as well, cause that has to stay at ninety-five degrees year-round, and we use the rest of it, the remainder of it, to, to heat the buildings. So, um, we, you know, try to use every last drop of, of energy that we can get out of that, um, at the treatment plant. Uh, then you have your sanitary sewer, your collection system. Uh, basically, that is a, they look for goals that you should, uh, you know, are you cleaning your sewers on an annual basis? Are you jetting, are you root cutting, are you manhole inspecting, are you televising? Are you, uh, you know, smoke testing? Are you doing all sorts of stuff out in the collection system, which you can see through here? We do do majority of that. We clean thirty-three percent of our system a year. We roughly inspect five percent of the manholes a year. And do all of our tele, and we, we have budgeted for televising. We have budgeted for sewer line replacement. We have budgeted for manhole replacement. We're getting to the point now, you'll see the guys all kind of working on chimneys here or there throughout the summer, working on manhole castings and getting those. Those are usually the main areas of failure on, on the sewer system.
Does the GIS system play into that that we have?
Yes, so actually, we just had a meeting yesterday with Cedar Corp. We're updating the GIS system to help us track some of that maintenance a little bit better. We have dashboard now that tells us how many manholes we've inspected, how many fire hydrants we've inspected and flushed, how many sewer manholes we've jetted and cleaned this year to help aid in this report. And then we have surveys that we fill out, pre-questionnaires for every manhole. The guys have to check boxes, they have to look at this, they have to look at that. And then that inspection is saved online through our GIS system.
And for people, what a GIS system is, it's, for the lack of, it's, it's a layered map of city utilities.
Correct.
And so on. And so we started this, how many years ago?
Twenty nineteen.
Twenty nineteen. Cedar Corp was our firm that, that came in. So we have it computerized, so we know we're all, it says getting in place where all of the water, sewer, all those things are gradually put in there. So the staff, we, we change something, it gets put in there. We inspect it, we put it in there. This way, we have that record and you could go to your computer screen and see exactly what the city has done. So that's what we talk about, GIS system.
And we, they all have GPS coordinates for location.
And they have GPS.
We have Digger, we call Digger's hotline and we, you know, know where all our stuff is and we can walk right to it.
And, and Mark, for example, and for anybody that's, so that when we're going to do a project, it's nice to know where this stuff is. So for example, when you're on Washington Street and you, you have something, I mean, we used to have an old card system. Kept track of stuff. And before you know it, we're, we're drilling through a water lateral.
Yeah.
And guess whose water lateral it was? That was before he was on council, but still, but all of a sudden it's, because it was at an angle instead of straight. Was that the reason why?
Correct.
And we ended up, but that stuff there is what you hopefully get past, so you're not going to, in the middle of winter, by the way, right?
So then the last section, as you can see, we got As on everything, we got maximum points on everything. So essentially, basically what I just need tonight is for you to pat me on the back and tell me I do an awesome job. And then give me your Ace.
Okay, give your Ace.
I'm just kidding. And my staff does a lot, a lot of work to, you know, make sure that we stay on As too. So it ain't just me and those guys are the ones down there doing the, the maintenance and, and keeping that thing on a daily basis too. So a lot of this kudos goes to them as well.
So obviously, yeah, Matt and your staff doing a great job. Also, obviously, the city administrator, city clerk, I mean, they're on the other end, the finance of it, making sure we talk about collections, doing those types of things. And so obviously, the, the folks sitting up here, plus of course Jenny, who all work in the office to, as you have to work with the public and get those, get those things done. Okay, any questions on the report itself? If not, we have the following resolution. Resolution twenty-three oh four, resolving that the common council of the city of Durant, with the majority of its members, concurring that the DNR is hereby notified that the compliance, maintenance, annual report has been completed, reviewed, and is attached with this resolution. Found no actions presently required to maintain the affluent requirements contained in the city's WPDES permit. Approved this day, the fourteenth day of June twenty twenty-three. Would somebody like to, this is a resolution, would somebody please offer it?
I'll offer the resolution.
It's been offered. Is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion, is there a second? And we have a second. Okay, resolution twenty-three oh four, it's been offered. There's been a motion to approve it and there's been a second. It's on the floor for any more questions. Again, any more questions concerning the report or how the resolution? Obviously, this is what we need to file with the state. So on, any other questions?
Who, who does all the numbers on that? I'm just curious. Does, there's someone from the state that comes in and does that, or?
So we have to report monthly. We have monthly, what's called DMRs that we have to report. So all these numbers get reported monthly, all the flow gets reported, all the, the BOD numbers get reported by essentially me every month. And then it just gets uploaded into this. So the numbers are here when I start this, but then I got to answer all the questions, fill in all the blanks.
Yep, I read through the report, Wes, it took me a while to get through it.
Yeah.
Got a lot going on there. Nice job.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Harrington, roll call please.
Councilor Booker. Councilor Riesler.
Yes.
Councilor Menke.
Yes.
Councilor Weisbeck.
Yes.
Councilor Weisepfel.
Yes.
All five in favor?
Next, move on. Discussion possible action regarding the Terran Park Pool project. Now, I know you never want to watch a movie or read a book and know the end of it, but I'm going to tell you what I, I'm expecting at the end of this. I'm not expecting any motion or action tonight. This is a reporting, would be a reporting situation as far as the, the Terran Park Pool project. As you know, we bid the project last year, we all know the result of that bidding and it put us in a situation. In the meantime, obviously appreciate the work being done, a lot of staff level stuff, trying to get us to the point, the two things that we needed to do. A, raise more money and B, get down some costs so we can move the project forward. We're under the belief that, that we would be bidding it this year again, end of the summer, maybe by the fall, depending on the situation, that we come together with the idea of building in the summer of twenty twenty-four. The one thing that we realized from the last set of bidding is that we basically knew we had to open this up for a longer period of time for whether it's the pool builders, whether it's the people doing the bathhouse, and so on and so forth. That the previous schedule and a number of factors that come into play for that, beyond the fact that the prices went up, having the ability to hire, they were, as far as staffing issues with companies and so on and so forth, as, as the way they were doing that. So that's what we moved forward with. And in the meantime, and again, there's, I know there are a lot of side conversations concerning this, so on. So the, what we did was, and I'm going to ask Superintendent Gills to talk a little bit about some of the things. What we decided to do, we had a look at the project and say, are there some things that we could remove? Again, without putting the pool, it's just a hole in the, in the ground with water. Well, you know, and so and so forth. There's, and so basically what you looked at a number, had a number of things, looking at working with local contract.
Yeah, so we worked with a couple of local contractors, Paul Hagnus. And we, we looked at the, we looked at the building and figured we could cut the concession stand completely off.
And by the way.
Update the concession stand.
To update people on the concession stand. We originally, we're going to put a small one in and then we went with a little larger one, figuring, hey, as long as we were doing it. At the time, there were some concerns because remember, when you put a, that type of concession stand in there, which is, for the lack of a better term, use one of your famous phrases, is, it was restaurant type. In other words, you'd get licensed and so on and so forth. And the idea was maybe we could have some more events there. There, there were some concerns at the time. What about staffing? What do you try to do, something like that? The feeling was, we pull the concession stand off, would help with the cost. And when there's enough places on that end of town that serve food, ice cream, so and so forth, that they, families that still go to the pool would have plenty of places to go. And for us, our concern is to provide a good, safe place for kids to play, whether it's the smaller kids, and, and not to worry about food, not to worry about concessions. There's other places that they could do that and, and to have a nice, a nice stand.
And then, you know, future, you know, maintenance too, we don't have to staff it. We don't have somebody managing food and taking inventory and ordering and stuff. That's really the only thing that we could potentially cut or downsize the rest of the building is standard state of Wisconsin code as far as fixtures and, and everything that goes along, showers, we're going to go along with, with code. We looked at the pool area, some of the things that we could potentially eliminate now and the SOS group could fundraise for in the future are shade structures. So we had a lot of shade structures built into the pool. We could potentially save, you know, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars by eliminating those structures and fundraising for them and installing them at a later date. We also looked at the play features, like the tot slide, the climbing wall, some of the bubble jets. We would build for them, they would be plumbed in. We could just buy the features again, fundraise, they could fundraise for the features and buy the features as they had money, which would essentially help us bring the project cost down to the point where we could build the pool and then fundraise towards them, features in a later date.
So we did those things. The idea was to, that, that led to the financial side of it. And I'll let the city administrator sort of speak on that. What we sort of put together is that, you know, our, our previous number was about three million dollars in raised money and that's a combination of us, the school district, and of course, private donations. To, to get to that next level where we're at, we're figuring that that number has to be about four million dollars.
Correct.
Okay, did I say? That's the number we, but by the time we put it all together and so on and so forth, that's where we need to be. And remember, as we talked about, the two things we had to do was A, get the cost of the project down and also raise some more money. There's still some things we're working on. And that's one of the reasons why I said tonight, we're really not in a situation to do this. I'm guessing within two weeks on the twenty-eighth. The idea by the twenty-eighth, we've also had some meetings with some donors. We've also had some input from some of those folks about, and, and we're taking all that into consideration as we move forward. And the idea would be to have at, at the next meeting, an idea, not only where we would be at financially and what we'd be able to do. Of course, the second thing is to put some, have some options for a calendar. When I say the calendar, I mean when we would bid, so and so forth, how we would move forward. And then of course, which would lead to the, the start of the project with the, now the one thing that, that, if, if we can get this bid a little quicker and, because if we know we got the funds put together, the idea would be we could really open up that schedule for some construction people. In other words, we're, we, again, the final decision hasn't been made, but as reported to us by staff, that this is probably the last summer this pool is going to be open. Because opening for another summer is going to be very difficult to try. So the, basically the idea is, so guess what? We know what's closing and then, and then we can move forward and, and hopefully again, spend that summer of twenty twenty-four building with an opening in the summer of twenty twenty-five.
So you'd lose one year.
We would lose a year. And if there was any way around that, would have been nice, but that the option just is, with, with, what, for what? Contractors built in because of the idea of trying to either stuff it and do it in the fall before it gets too cold or in the spring, when it gets warm enough and trying to get it done by a certain date, just isn't going to work. And when we had the previous bids, that's the way we had. Now, again, pre-COVID, pre-supply chain, pre-all this other stuff, it might have been a different story. But obviously, that's not the situation we're in today.
Then we do need roughly about a month to make the, you know, the changes that we just talked about have not been made in the construction documents, in the plans. So I mean, I need a month at minimum to redo the plan sheets, redo the bid specs, redo the contracts and tidy up the engineering end of it before we do anything.
And the feeling was that if I bring this forward at the, the meeting coming up on the twenty-eighth, we could get the calendar together and so on. The working with some of these contractors are saying that we're still, obviously, the quicker we get it out, the better we get that. But also, the other thing about it is if we, you know, we get it out by late summer, early fall, and I mean, that's when they're bidding next summer.
Right, you get a lot of your pricing.
And then you get stuff and, and to be able to do that.
We still are a million dollars short as of right now.
And doing that.
That's the big thing to take away. And I think the mayor's point is a good one. It's, we're, we're, we've been contacting quite frequently, fair to say, by the SOS group and some other people of, okay, Paul, it was last, last August, almost ten months ago, you took these bids. Has anything been going on since then? And there's been a lot going on, you know, meeting with these folks. Again, kudos to Matt and, and Cole Hagnus for all the extra work that he's put in to look at some of these numbers from the bids. And is there any way we can trim this a little bit? And so, you know, that's where we stand. But at the end of the day, we're still about a million short.
And by the way, we've also gone back to not only to the building part of it, but also pool builders. It's trying to make sure that we're shoring up our pricing. You know, where are we right now? How are we, you know, and so on and so forth. And Matt's made those contacts with that, the site work people and so on and so forth, to make sure that we're, we're shoring up, shoring up those numbers as best we can.
So that, that's the hard part here, also an hard point here is to go up to bid and make sure our funding, funding is secure before we go up to bid. So, you know, a little bit of work to do on that.
What was the total amount of savings on everything, concession, slides and all the fixtures?
We, we bid it out last year, we were right around that four point three, four point four million. We're going to be, now we're going to be a little over four million. So we're talking about a two to, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar savings.
And we lost a little ground because of inflation.
Yeah.
On that. Because even though we took some of those things out. Okay? Any questions? Again, just to make sure everybody, between now and next meeting, as we get the opportunity individually, if, if anybody on the council wants to meet individually with me or, or meet with Matt or the city administrator, can go ahead and get some specific questions, but hopefully we'll have some, some information squared away and be ready to, to go forward. At least with a calendar. But again, and, and the other idea, they're saying that there's a certain point where we have to say, if we want to build in the summer of twenty twenty-four, that we, you know, we're still looking at. I mean, if we get, we can't get too far into the fall, correct? If we want summer twenty twenty-four.
If you want summer twenty twenty-four, you should, you know, meet your bids out in, you know, October at the end.
At the, at the end. And Russ, you sort of agree on that, that's?
Oh yeah, sooner the better. Issue for ordering equipment, need time for equipment and.
They just were getting contractors early before they get this season.
You ordered what?
Just ordered a new light bulb, twenty-five weeks. So again, as soon as, again, I could sit here and say as soon or better on the bid, but you got to have the money before you got to go up to bid. That, that, there's a few things there that you got to get worked on.
Any more questions? Okay, move on, let's pay the bills. As we said, coming up, having a public works committee meeting coming up in July, we'll get that squared away.
Another, perhaps you can go on committee. Excuse me, Manson, thank you for your best, I have a few guys as well. We probably go that potentially won't leave you enough or whatever time we're passing. Matt, Matt's anticipating probably a two hour meeting, so that's kind of like that.
Yeah. I'm going to maintain the balance.
I may have to check on something, but.
Yeah, just let us know. Another, another meeting that we do have coming up is, and we're working, and I guess it's, I'm just going to bring this up during my, my report, knowing that this was coming. Just essentially, I think many of you have heard that the, the lots, the Bauer lots next to the park have sold. A person who purchased those is requesting a rezoning, put up basically duplexes there. So it's currently zoned business, but they're asking for a rezoning for residential one and two. So that will be coming up. We anticipate no later than the end of July, but probably a public hearing at the, the meeting in July twelfth.
And that's also something that obviously needs to be brought up on the plan.
Plan page as well, yeah. The two empty, the two vacant lots.
Best ride lots.
Oh.
Perfect.
Right, you're too.
Yeah.
Okay, does anybody else have any other future agenda items for consideration?
Well, that's, we gotta double up.
Yeah.
How's that fool holding up? What do you think?
No comment.
No jinxing, Mark, no jinxing.
It's warm.
Well, it was one of the days that we didn't have it heated, it was still 90, you know, we had some 90-degree days in there, so.
What happened, Matt? What, poop out?
So we, we originally, the, the burners and the insulation panel that goes around the burners were shot, so we talked about replacing them about two months ago, when we talked about opening the pool, so we ordered those parts, and sure enough, the, the part for the burner was wrong, and there was some finger pointing back and forth between the company that makes it and the ordering, and we'll come to find out that this boiler is, shocker, older, they don't make the, they don't make parts for this anymore, so the part they shipped us was a standard part, they needed to make a custom part, so we waited a couple of weeks to get the custom part, then we crossed our fingers that the custom part would, would fit, so we got the custom parts for it, they fitted, they fit, they bolted upright, and then we got it fired up then last Friday.
Yeah, so the part had to be.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers.
Second.
We have a motion, second, to approve the vouchers, roll call please.
Councilmember Weisenbeck.
Yes.
Councilmember Riesler.
Yes.
Councilmember Menke.
Yes.
Councilmember Hooker.
Yes.
Councilmember Weisackel.
Yes.
All five in favor?
Okay, motion's agreed to, vouchers are approved. There are no other agenda items, would somebody would like to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion, second, to adjourn.